Town Hall, First Floor Meeting Room, Town of Holbrook, Massachusetts on Monday, 2028, 2015. At 7:00 PM, we had the following petition requesting a variance and/or a special permit for the Holbrook zoning bylaws from the Holbrook zoning laws. Petitioner 1-5-04, Michael P. O'Shaughnessy, attorney representing Mass Media Corp. of 14 Longhorns Road, Easton, Mass. Request a special permit for one Mier Road for utility installation. Petitioner requests your leave under zoning bylaws, Section 6.8. The assessment's plan is Lot 19006. Mr. O'Shaughnessy?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
of the Board of Appeals. My name is Attorney Michael O'Shaughnessy. I'm attorney with an office in Middleborough and Easton. For you tonight is a request for a special permit pursuant to Section 6.8 here zoning bylaws. This property is in the flood protection district, so we are subject to your jurisdiction under this avenue. This is located in the industrial park on the Mier Road. This is a hundred thousand plus square foot existing building. My client intends to use the rear of the building for his enterprises. The whole site's in the flood protection district, as I mentioned. To support our activities inside the building, we need to bring in a new water service and a new electric service. We're not increasing anything more than 20% on the exterior of the building, so we don't trip that portion of the special permit requirement. Section 6.8 specifically refers to the installation utilities in the floodplain protection district. Just as an overview, and I'll show it on the next sheet, right now, the proposal is to bring a water line in from Mier Road down the side of the building and tie it in. It's a little bit more clearly shown on sheet, the second sheet, I've highlighted for the board's edification. Basically, we're starting at Mier Road, we're bringing in and tying it into the building. This may not be the final location, and the reason I say that is DPW folks may say, no, 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 we don't want you to tie it in there, we want you to tie it in over here. So if you are inclined to issue a special permit, I would request that consideration in your decision. We're also proposing to bring in an electric service. Right now, there's electric service overhead on the poles. The utility's gonna wanna bring it underground from an existing pole. So from an existing pole, we're gonna bring it into the, uh, to the transformer pad, and then from there, it'll run into the building. Again, we're at the mercy of the utility, so there'll have to be some coordination with the utility. That's it in a nutshell. It's not a very, um, it's not a very complicated project. It's pretty straightforward. We received a negative determination about the adaptability from the Conservation Commission. They asked us to install some siltation around the excavation. And the planning board issued our, uh, special permit today, um, under their special permit hat for the work that you see depicted on the plan. For the board's edification, I've prepared a draft decision. Some boards like to see this stuff, some boards don't. It effectively recites what I have stated earlier on. If the board wants to use this, I'm happy to email it to you. You can put it on your letterhead. Effectively, I've spelt out, but I've just said under general findings, the special criteria with respect to the utility installation set forth. You have to certify that all utilities as proposed are located and constructed so as to minimize or eliminate flood damage. What we're going to do is we're gonna dig a trench, gonna install the pipe, and we're gonna restore the pavement to existing grade. In the utility, uh, the water installation as well as the electric installation, we're not changing the topography at all, no impact to, um, the floodplain. There's a second component of your findings, that methods of disposal for sewage, refuse, and other waste and methods of providing drainage are adequate to reduce flood hazards and prevent pollution. We are not proposing a new sewer tie-in, uh, we're gonna use the existing service that's there. We're not making any improvements, we're not making any changes to the existing flood patterns, we're not installing any drainage, we're doing nothing to the exterior of the building. And as far as refuse goes, refuse will either be contained in a dumpster outside, or they'll have to do something inside, whatever's typically done down there. That is what we're seeking in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I think my first question was, I'm not seeing any, like, distances for this proposed electrical or water, um, like, off of any kind of benchmarks here.
Uh, if, are we looking for a distance from there to there, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Back and still.
Or off the river, too.
Uh, okay, so we did.
So there is nothing detailed on.
No, there is, there is no detail, just a general.
Okay, all right, that's the concept plan.
Okay.
Um, another question is, is this new electric and water, where is the old electric and water? Is that shown at all on here?
The, the, the old water, I believe, is brought in from the front of the street to the front of the building.
Okay.
This is an easier run to where we're using, so it's gonna be its own service for its own section of the building.
So, right now, there's one, one water main feeding the building, and you're proposing to divide that, is what you're saying? You're gonna still use the existing for this half of the building?
Yes, sir.
So it's a new water main, actually, is what it is?
It would be a new water service.
This is, um... Okay, so it is, okay. I kinda read right past that, new water service, okay, that's how it's written up. Did the planning board have any issues with no dimensions on some of these things, or did they have a different set of plans?
This, this was the set of plans. They didn't have issues with it. Again, their, their jurisdiction was really related to the aesthetics of what was going on.
I do know that, yeah, yeah, okay.
But no, they did not, to answer your question.
Okay. Uh, conservation, any, any dimensions for, for them?
There was no requirements, other than the siltation requirements, the siltation fence. In my, my draft decision, I parroted what they had required as far as the excavation goes.
Okay. I guess, you know, another question with all of this is, um, you know, why, you're kinda generally just putting this water line in. The electric, I understand, there's, there's telephone poles here somewhere, right? They come down?
Correct. The tele, you see, the OHW, overhead wires from pole to pole to pole, there's gonna be a new service dropped here at this, uh, new utility pole, so we'll bring it overhead to that pole, then we'll go underground.
So this is the only new pole? Okay. So I kinda get that, and that makes a lot of sense, there's not really anything you can do to maneuver that around. But the water service, um, alternatives, were there any alternatives that were discussed on this?
Uh, there, there really weren't. This seems to be where they wanna bring in all the utilities to service the building. The electrical's gonna be, as you can see, the transformer pads here, they wanna bring in the water, too. Uh, I'm not familiar with the inside of the structure, I haven't been involved, that's under the purview of the building inspector. But as far as bringing, uh, the, the water line in an alternate location, uh, this effectively was the shortest run to where we needed it to go. Again, if the DPW says, no, 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 we don't like that, we're saying, fine, we're, we're happy to install it wherever they deem proper.
This building's already subdivided, there's a tenant in the, in this, uh, other section?
Yes, the, the front of the building's currently being used, I cannot tell you what purpose it's being used for.
Okay. So this is actually, okay, so this is Mass Media, Media Corp. Is, is this section of the building here, and this dotted line is the, okay. Okay, so that's the shortest distance to get water to this half of the building, and then the existing building must already have water terminated from the other half, I'm assuming?
Yeah, I'm assuming as well, Mr. Chairman.
So, separate water meters. Okay, so shortest distance basically to get to there. Questions?
No, I think the answer is, I mean, is the entire building inside the floodplain?
Pretty much this whole park is inside the floodplain.
The part that you're gonna be renting, I mean, 'cause, you know, I had the similar question that, uh, that Jim had, that, you know, I, I wasn't aware that there was a tenant in the front and you're in the back, 'cause my question was, why is it not coming along the existing and going through the building?
Sure.
But, you know, seeing the plans, it spells it out, so no, I, I don't have any further questions, just gotta answer mine about the shortest distance.
As opposed to?
This is the only piece that's not.
Well, that's, that's, that's the riverfront, the floodplain actually.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, right. No, it's just the riverfront. I mean, what's your name, this?
These other proposals, these are what went through with the planning board?
Yes, and again, um, we will, we will have to coordinate with the utility as far as what's being installed, where it's being installed. Things change, um, they may have new standards, and we're just asking for some flexibility with the, this board as well, if, if that has to change slightly.
So anything that needs excavation, other than, these are all above surface, slightly above surface, it's just, you know, you have some footings and everything else here, but just due to the water and the electric, you've come as 6.8, designed for, ask us for relief to bring it in this side. Is this building already separated?
It is not, uh...
Is it, is it, is it gonna be closed?
That is, this is going to be partitioned off. If there's a partition there now, I don't recall, I've been looking at the architectural plans, at some point in time, but effectively, for all intents and purposes, this use is going to be isolated from this use. It has to be for what's being proposed inside.
Does your group think of purchasing the property? Are they just leasing it from now to get the?
Right now, I think it's just a lease, yes.
Um, I guess, to review one more question on this, I'm not really in favor of a plan that doesn't have, like, dimensions to these things, and I do understand what you're saying with what the town might require for water. You start digging, there's a big boulder there that, you know, probably don't wanna move just 'cause you are so close to the water's edge and all of that. But, um, approving something like this, uh, I guess, for a language thing, I would like to be able to be saying something that, uh, has a approximation, uh, to that line from the scale on the drawing, if you're following what I'm saying. I'd like to, I'd like to be putting language to this that has something that doesn't, that that still has town, that still has our control over it to a certain degree.
Um, if you look at what I've proposed on the last page, um, and I can provide the board with a more detailed plan, a more dimensioned plan, if, if that's what you deem fit, but what I'm proposing is, and, and I'm, I'm happy to qualify this, is we're happy to submit you an ASBIL once it's installed, if that addresses your concerns. I mean, I'd be more comfortable looking at an ASBIL plan with a surveyor stamp on it saying, this is where we put it, this is good, rather than rely on these willy-nilly. We're happy to do that, that's not an issue.
Well, ASBIL still would mean that we'd have to be granting this special permit ahead of time, that's an after the fact, yeah. You know, I guess that's what I'm, you know, thinking in our conversation here, um, you know, some sort of language to this that doesn't, you know, doesn't give you, well, the zoning board let us do it, you know, according to the plan, plus or minus seventy-five feet, you know, which puts you in the water.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying? And I may, maybe I'm being a little, a little far-fetched with this, but I would like to close it into an envelope that's, uh, something reasonable.
What's a DPW, looking at that, is it being installed?
They would, but they, you know, honestly, that's, that's about, um, you know, um, you know, where they would like to see that, and if you've got an overhead door here, and you've already, you're, you're already basically calling this your utility zone.
Correct.
Which makes a lot of sense, because this is the way the building's laid out, and that is the shortest distance, which was a great statement to be saying. But I'm just saying that I'd like to see this with a, for us in an approving, writing up something that is, is user-friendly for you, but also limiting so that we can have a little more of a preciseness to our language in a write-up. You know, uh, if we were to be proposing something like, you know, and I don't have a scale on it, but, uh, you know, this is, uh, an inch is twenty feet, there's a lot of leeway there. You know, if it was, you know, uh, plus or minus twenty feet of where that line is.
Yeah, I, I'm.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, more than happy to accept that.
Guys can go either.
Either direction.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I'm, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, within a reasonable number.
That's what I'm saying, instead of saying reasonable number.
You wanna put a number on it, yeah, you want a reasonable number, so it doesn't go closer to the, to the river.
Absolutely, absolutely, I, I have no, no issue with such language. Again, my only concern is if, if, if the guys go out there to start doing this work, and the DPW says, no, I don't, I don't, we don't like it on this side of the building, we want you to come down this way and come all the way back around. I'm not saying they would, but...
Okay, and you did not have a conversation even, and they haven't?
I, I have not had a conversation with the DPW.
We don't have anything from them.
No, that they even saw this, too, yeah, which is usually.
Well, it's probably more so they have the twenty feet on any of the side, 'cause if it goes over there.
Well, let's just hypothetically look at that for one minute here, you know, and I know what you're saying, that's as far-fetched as this situation can probably go.
Right.
Would be to put it on the other side of the building. I don't even know where this property ends, is this the, is the building right here?
Yeah, this, this property actually goes all the way over, over to the side as well, so there would be move to do it, I'm not suggesting or advocating for that. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to accept language twenty feet on either side of what is shown on the plans, and if there was a major issue with the DPW, and we have to come back, that's what we'll do?
Because the line is coming in there now, you're saying this is not satisfaction for what your group's needs are gonna be for water?
Yes.
Even if it was come in and teed and submeted?
Yes, there is not enough capacity to furnish, um, the requirements, um, for what's being proposed inside the building.
And it's not easy to take the line up the stair, put a bigger line in, and just submeter it?
I'm not the expert, and I'm told they need, um, new water line with a bigger water service to get the volume of water, um, backed to what they need it for. That was my thought as well, why don't you just do something inside the building, it's like, no, 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 we need the volume.
Any questions?
I haven't.
No? Okay, um, so we'll, uh, we'll close the hearing, and, um, we'll make a decision, and I think we have a decision date that we have to hear to of, uh, the fourteenth of October, right, Heidi?
Um, on a special permit, the decision is ninety days.
Oh, I see, the, okay, that's, so it's eleven-nine.
Correct.
Eleven-nine is the, uh, date you.
We have to have it.
Required here from us by, certainly here from us, well before that, uh, you know, usually within two weeks.
Sure.
We have decisions on that. And we have all your information, if there's any contact information we need, we have it on something, right?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. That's it? Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That would be even good.
Well, I mean, the whole, um, coming down the side makes sense now, as I said, I didn't know there was a, that it was a split tenant, I thought they were the entire building, so my questions were kinda answered by others, by why are we not, you know, increasing the size of the existing and going through the building, but, you know, it seems what they're proposing to bring in just one service to the back of the building, for that portion of the tenant, makes, uh, makes sense. Yeah, very good.
Very busy plan, but it was here, but I, I didn't see that either at first until we started talking about subdivision here of tenant on the other page.
They just want a separate meter.
They just want a separate meter with more volume, I mean.
No, this, this, this is, this doesn't use much, if you drove by, it's just full of boxes, it's just some storage and transportation.
I don't know what a standard water line would have been for a building of this size, but they're proposing a new, yeah, exactly, two-inch water main for this, which I believe, from what I've read on this, you're gonna use every bit of that two-inch water main itself.
Most likely.
Okay. I wanted to bring that up to him on the sense that being a special permit, um, you know, even though it's a permit, not a, you know, not a request for a variance at all, but to have a plan that doesn't really have a, um, detail of, of dimensions when you're looking at a floodplain area, you know, would be a whole different story, I think, if this floodplain was, uh, they're proposing that line to be within a foot of the river, so to speak, you know what I mean? You wouldn't, you'd be asking them to move it over, but I don't wanna let them just kinda maneuver around everything either, you know, so that's why I like the idea of that. Does everybody like that idea for them?
I like that idea. I mean, he has a proposed on the plan, so.
Right, but it's still not dimensions.
Right, it's not dimensions, but as you say, you take that plan and you put the language in, it's plus or minus.
Not a big trench.
Not a big trench. It's only a two-inch line.
Right, right, it's just the width of the deck, oh, that's it, yeah.
There's not much going through there.
Right, right.
I mean, there's plenty of room to go either way.
Yeah, it's mostly gonna be plastic pipe, so it's gonna...
The farther out they come, the more it's gonna use, the shorter the distance, the less it's gonna use, as far as material.
Right, right, you're right, that gets more costly for them.
And this is gonna be nicely, everything comes in here, as you said, somewhere in here's gonna be utility area, this is gonna be a room that's probably be blocked off from the rest of the area for all the air.
Well, it looks like this is gonna be like their overhead door, main entrance area.
They're gonna have a lot going on in there, for heat and water, what have you, sunlight.
That's a lot of, uh, air conditioning proposals for condensed areas. All right, entertain, uh, decision here. You gonna try to work with the? I'm sorry? You gonna try to work with this a little bit, or just? Uh, yeah, maybe we should just take a minute and see if anybody has any issues with the way he's already wrote in this, uh, written, I should say. I wasn't even reading, really, I wasn't even thinking, wrote five.
Five.
Yeah, five, I wasn't even thinking about five.
Hydro tomato plants, too, or something like that.
Yeah, the planning and conservation didn't ask for anything to be measured off, it's Well, you know, planning, you know, planning has all the, this stuff, you know what I mean?
Close.
Specifically.
Labeled.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't see anything, you know, I didn't read this word for word, but skimming through it once anyways, I don't see anything that's...
I think you should have to add that one piece to it.
And I, and I would add that to specific findings, one is where I would add in a language for, um...
Make reference one.
Yeah.
Add in your own spot as a decision.
Yeah, but as, okay, as a footnote of one. Yeah. With the, uh, twenty feet.
Left or right?
Left or right of each.
Proposed.
Proposed line. But the, the electric is, is a given, because those are, that's an existing pole, it's, he's coming straight down here, so.
And he's going across.
He's going to this one here, so, um, they certainly don't want them blocking parking spaces, so that'll end up in that area.
That's underground as well, right?
Right.
From the last pole, yeah.
Well, underground from one-one new pole.
One-one new pole, then underground.
Underground, the way he's describing this here. No, he's saying overhead.
No.
Proposed new overhead electrical, okay, and then from here, and then dotted line to underground, okay. So, um, findings within, right, 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 yeah.
I think it makes twenty feet for the water line.
And just leave where the electric is. Just write it as water line.
Same foot.
That what you're saying?
Yeah, the motion would be to, as far as granting a special permit for the underground two-inch water service, about twenty feet either way of the pole's line, and the electric line from the last pole, just to say we follow what the plan shows now, which is basically... What's this, an entrance into the building?
Well, I think you still have to do it for both utilities, just 'cause as, as he said, and I know I've, I've dealt with this before, when they do that transformer pad, it's the electrical, utility may say, you know, you need to move it a little further away from that overhead door, whatever, whatever, then that's gonna mean that, so I would think we should be doing both utilities. And, and more than likely, the electric one's probably gonna have almost zero change.
Only depends if the water comes this way, towards it. This is only, these are only about ten feet normally. Well, these pocket spots are usually nine and a half to ten feet.
Right.
That's just a little bigger than the pocket spot.
The overhead, that's an overhead pole, yeah, yeah. Yeah, he's showing like a buffer area here.
Yeah.
It looks like it's probably just on the pavement marked out. I hear a motion then.
I'll make a motion to grant this special permit, and we would have to have some type of writing in the special permit about being twenty foot either way of where they have their proposed two-inch water line, and they propose underground electric conduit, twenty feet by the side.
Okay, now we'll second that motion. Wrong in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we're all set with the overall decision, and with?
With your added language.
With the added, okay. Do you have any other business finding?
I have a voucher to sign.
How've you been?
Good. And then this came in today's mail for zoning, don't know if anybody wants to take a look at that. And I don't have any new cases on the horizon.
You'll have to start one.
I was gonna say, nothing would, maybe somebody would come.
Mm-hmm. Okay. We should close it. Just pen, any, any pen, any color?
Yeah.
Small towns. Okay.
Thank you.
We had two things that were still been looming out there for a few months now that still need to get a little more control of, and that was the, the different newspapers and what the different costs were. You wanna kind of like show us what all that was?
It's all been, well, voucher you just, no, this is, that was, um, I would, the page you ledgers outrageous to publishing.
No, I know, but I think we need to be able to make decisions, you know, what we talked about back in a meeting in the spring list, to know what the different, what the different costs were and what other boards were doing so that we could make decisions.
I was only, I only heard...
More so based, more so based on the ability to have a hearing than to be, um, caught with, uh, you know, like the Money Saver, for instance, doesn't, it's every other week now, you know, and to expedite hearings when we need to. So, we did talk about having, to be able to see what those differences were so we could understand what kind of expenses we may incur if we make a decision to use whatever you're saying is the highest paper. So I think that's something we all need to know from an email standpoint too, like a spreadsheet of some sort, just to show.
Okay, I don't have anything like formally, it's...
But I'm just saying, you tell us now, I'm gonna forget. I mean, you can certainly go through it if you want right now, but I still want to see something.
Well, I think it's, it turned out to be pretty simple after everything fell into place.
Okay.
Um, the ledger is three times as much as the sun and the money saver.
So the money saver's ba-, I mean, the sun's basically come back in line with what the money saver used to be?
Yeah.
That's, I'm just seeing this voucher going, that's fairly inexpensive.
Yeah, that, so that was really good news.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so, and basically, you know, so it's been, it's now the same that we were using all along with the pin, uh, the money saver.
And the alternatives to those three?
They just have a little bit of a, a different deadline that kind of throws us off, just by a few days. Um, and it's really doesn't matter in the big scheme of things, it's just three different days, a little later. But, so, um, and they're very good, and it's just unfortunate that the money saver went to that, you know, every other week. Um, I did talk to Avon, well, they were the only ones that got back to me. You know, I put out a few phone calls, and in Avon, they use the Enterprise and the Money Saver, but the Enterprise, this girl, Mary Ann, from Avon Z B A, um, says they're very difficult to deal with. And I had difficulties dealing with the, the ledger of the particular person. You know, there's better people to deal with in the publishing, um, department than others, but... So then when I told her what, what I just did, which was to use the sun for the two weeks, you know, she said, oh, I think I'm gonna do that, so that's really all I have as far as any research goes.
Oh, she can do that with her local town paper, is what you meant?
Well, I don't think they have one, Avon.
Uh, she can use the silver sun?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
If you look in the, those ads, it's Stoughton's in there.
Oh, yeah, that's...
Randall, that's right.
Because that's like the, uh...
It's like the gateway.
Yeah, but you know, I think the Enterprise and the Ledger are one of the same.
They are, yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
They're all, I think, owned.
By the same, but, yeah, so you, the phone might ring to the same person, doesn't matter if it's for the Enterprise or the Ledger.
Well, actually, when it, well, when you go to place an ad, you have to specify the Ledger or the Enterprise.
But it's the same.
But it could be ten people at the Ledger, is what you're saying, yeah.
Okay. So we were seeing that in the spreadsheet and so we can have it, and then also what you're saying is some of them change us by a few days if we were to do it?
If you want, um, yeah, sure. I didn't, I never got an actual price, they did give me a price per some sort of inch, what they call it.
If you just add in the comments, like the comment thing, then what's our...
I'll give you what I got.
What's our typical, what would our typical ad cost? Then, just so we'd have a...
They're both the same.
Yeah, it's always within, right, probably three words or something. That, and then the other thing that we have to still follow up on is what the other towns were charging for special permit write-ups and for, um, our regular variance permits too. You're gonna check some of the local towns and see what they've been doing.
Yeah, we had discussed that, you and I, but now that the, that was because we were considering upping our fees.
Yep.
You have to cover it, but so now that really hasn't changed, like we're still paying the same for the publishing that we've switched over to the sun.
Right, but we haven't done any changes in a long time, we need to know what other towns are doing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I thought it was just for that purpose.
No, no, definitely want to know.
Okay.
Yeah, I want a raise.
Yeah, I mean, we want a carry.
Zero times zero is zero, so.
If I have a zero on there, I'd be happy to have zero, two, zero times zero. Roll your chair out, I'll put this under this and it'll be a little higher.
You made it easy, now you're making a short joke.
I thought it was a chair joke.
It was a chair joke. Home of the Ravens, am I supposed to laugh?
It was getting the raise.
Oh, I was gonna get my rate, I get it.
Raise.
I get it, I get it.
Any other business?
I don't believe so. Hey, any other?
I don't have anything.
Okay, great, we'll close the meeting then.
You want to adjourn?
You want to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye.
Yep.